Yes, you do. Commissioner Roach?
Here.
Commissioner Haynes?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Hale? Here. Mayor May?
Here, we have a quorum present. Our work session agenda has comments from state legislatures that don't say that.
I don't see any.
So this time would be citizen comments. This would be the time.
Can I ask a question? Did any of these people call and say they were going to fail the show? Or did they just not show?
No, and I will admit I did not call Friday to follow up.
But they knew.
But I had talked to the right people in each office.
We just got stood up.
So then there would be citizen comments. This would be time on the agenda where any citizens who have comments on any item, not necessarily agenda items, but anything can send files.
Mayor, I would like to commend the commission for delaying our sewer raise until 2016 because those of us on a fixed income appreciate any little bit of help you can give us.
Well, we're all -- I think everybody here was unanimous. So we thank everybody.
Thank you, Bill.
And that was, for the record, our former Commissioner Sally Stumbo.
Yes.
I knew her when. Before when.
We need to make the doors a little taller for you, don't we?
Anybody? Somebody else is coming in.
Someone's hit his head walking through the door. We need to raise those doors.
I'm at citizen comments now, so this is the time when any private or public comments can be made.
Just in time.
Just name your name.
Bob Haggert. And first, I have a question, just curiosity. I was going to ask before we got started when the new commission would be seated. My main question tonight was, the Commission for Human Rights was authorized by ordinance 16 months ago, and my understanding it hasn't been made yet. So I was curious as to what is scheduled for final appointments? And a question of if sufficient appointments have been made to allow quorum, can they legally go ahead and meet?
We have all the appointments have been made and don't know of any requests for any meetings.
There have been none.
Yeah.
Should I have to?
Is it there things they do on their own that they don't have to have a complaint with me?
They haven't had a complaint. I don't think.
There hasn't been any reason.
Interactions with other people, a lot of the commissions in the city.
That would be a question, I guess, you'd direct to the members of the commission, wherever the point of contact would be.
I would like to know who the members of the commission are because I don't even know the appointments.
Okay.
It's not with me, I don't. And I don't recall. I can show you at a break.
Yeah, that's it. I'll have to know tonight.
I can remember most of them, but I don't want to try to do it by memory.
If I tried to name them, I wouldn't get them.
Three of one, right?
No.
No?
She's on the plan of commission now.
Okay.
We're not going to do it by memory. We're just waiting.
Yeah, we just give them a list. Those things. All right, anybody else? If not, this is your last chance. Okay, so everybody else is here just to observe it. I just want to be sure.
They're here for the bourbon, though.
Bourbon? All right, so next item would be discussion on conservation easements. Deborah White is here. Thank you for being here, Deb. Ms. White, sorry.
We are here to talk about the property out on the connector that the city started to manage here in Wallace, New Orleans. About the property, I'm Deborah White, which is Whittington's land trust. Andy came back on the board. Some was on the board. And Andrew is here, so we have additional questions. We are.
Can you come to the table for stand-up so the tape gets in?
Yeah. The property is about 69 acres, and about 44 acres of the property is forested. The forest is in pretty good shape. It's steep, and it supports a population of bronze rock cress, which is a federally endangered plant species. And Whittington Waters is concerned about selling the property and, you know, what will eventually happen to it. And while it's owned by the city, it seems like an opportunity to look at some conservation. And we might want to talk about bronze rock cress or recovery.
Yeah, it's one of those situations, you know, I guess as the city council or board, I think, Deb, right, you have an opportunity to basically do something good for the bigger community because Franklin County in particular is sort of the hub for this species worldwide. There's more of it in the northern portion of the county. It occurs on these steep rocky slopes with pretty good soils. So it's not really developable type land, you know. So whatever we do, species recovery, the whole gist of it is basically boiled down to how many populations that we can protect when we have a chance to in order to eventually take them off endangered species. And so, you know, since Deb's identified this population as a pretty good shape, the ones are in pretty good shape, it's an opportunity to protect another one, which then may lead to its de-listing, and it makes it a lot easier for regulatory standards to go on everybody else. So, you know, I guess I'm here to advocate for, you know, some protection of that population. I don't think that, looking at the area of property, I don't think all the property out there is good habitat for it, particularly the development parts of it. So, you know, development of those sites probably won't be an issue, but what we worry about is if it got in the wrong hands, you know, what might happen.
I was going to say, to further expand on that, when this was first discovered, discovered many years ago, Andrew Tanick was our harbor, with our tree board, probably before your harvest, actually, on the tree board, and found this little, a small patch, and that allowed us to get the first land, Connecticut Headings Land Conservation Fund, the big grant that led to a lot of the development of Cove Springs, the way it is today. I mean, we still could have done things, but it would have cost us more money out of local tax dollars. That allowed for the wetland project to go forward, and Deborah White was chair of the tree board, I guess after you. And finally got off the tree board a couple of years ago, still continue to work as a volunteer. And, you know, Ms. Stumbo is here today with Waters Land Trust to be supportive of it. You were commissioner, I think, still?
Yeah, when that happened. If I may, Mayor, briefly, I've given all of the commissioners and the city managers, may have, we passed out our little brochure. Now, I don't know how familiar you are with the mission of the land trust, but it's much bigger than just plants and just forests and just protecting land, whereas that, you know, that's one of our major issues, that our responsibility, the land trust, they're all over the United States, and they're nonprofit organizations, and ours is in the Kentucky River watershed. That's what we're working to protect. And it's Owen, Henry, Franklin, and maybe a little, too, Woodford County. And not only did we want to protect the land, and we have the authority and the ability to purchase easements or to ask farmers, for example, to grant an easement to the trust in perpetuity, to protect that area that is along the river. And if you look further down the road, it's also protecting all of our water, the water for all of us. And so while it's a conservation, a major conservation protection, it also protects all of the citizens' water. So, you know, it's an important part of this area that we're asking you to consider is not developable. In other words, you cannot build a plant board on it. You can't build, you know, a structure on it. And it's forested, and it's sort of down in a hole, so it's just going to be there. But we're asking you to consider allowing the trust to be active in protecting it.
Is there any? I don't know. Let me know. I just want to put that aside in there so the commission would know a little bit about why bronze rock cress is important, was important, and how that led to a place where now children and adults have an archery range, we have a wetland conservation area, walking trails, all kinds of programs that we've had at Cove Springs. Probably most of them would have been difficult to get to this point if we didn't have the money from the Heritage Land Conservation Fund, so we deeply appreciate that group. Connecticut Nature Preserves Commission, I'm trying to think, I almost forgot the people I used to work for, Nature Conservancy, that group. So a lot of folks, US Fish and Wildlife Department, Kentucky Fish and Wildlife, Natural Resources, all those folks came together to flow a lot of money into a place just because of a small plant.
Yeah, it's become a much-used park and a major asset.
Mayor, while we have the federal representative here, I wonder if it would be okay to ask him if there were any grant possibilities available from the feds, and maybe Ms. White would know if there are grant possibilities available from the state with respect to setting aside this property?
Yeah, there are, actually. There's one available right now, Recovery Land Acquisition Grant Program. It's funded through a progressive appropriation of the best fish and wildlife service. It's specifically geared for partnership-type projects where there's a matching component. It's specifically designed to conserve, you know, plants and animals that are endangered or threatened in their habitats. And we've been pretty successful in Kentucky over the years, not necessarily in Franklin County, but up along Lincoln River and a few other places across the state, and getting some of that money. You know, of course, the Heritage Fund is about zeroed out now. You know, you could always go back to then. We have, at least, Woods and Waters and other land trusts now have the opportunity to compete for dollars directly out of Heritage Fund. You know, there's all kinds of grant opportunities. You just have to talk to the right people.
Do you have contact information on getting information for the grant, which you said may be available?
Recovery Land Acquisition Grant. Yeah, it has to come through the State Nature Preserves Commission, that they want to call Section 6 grants, and that's Section 6 under the Major Species Act, is basically a program that Congress set up to provide grants to state agencies that are working in partnership with us. In Kentucky, for plants, that's the Nature Preserves Commission; for animals, it's Kentucky Fish and Wildlife. So, you know, you can work through Gondot's office across town to put in a couple of things for that. You know, it's one of those things, you know, in this particular case, I haven't been to decide, but I live in Franklin, so I'm pretty familiar with what it looks like, you know, from the room, anyway. You know, the other option is that the city could just donate it to Woods and Waters, you know, cut out the park that's not developable and let them have it. You know, that's also an option, too. And there's other, you know, we have, our office has the Indiana Back Conservation Fund. We provide matching grants for forest conservation in particular. And they have now working on one at the Intercity Council group, you know, for bronze rock cress. There's a lot of ways to sort of get at, you know, conserving this little spot. I'm, I'm the acre, would actually fall within the type habitat.
About 45, something like that. It's nice to have a little buffer on the top so the activities don't, you know, affect that top of the forest. I gave you a little, a few alternatives, and hopefully maybe in your packets, but just kind of listing what your possible conservation alternatives are. As we said, you know, donating the property or retaining the property, putting an easement on it, there's several, you know, you have several options.
Mayor, I would recommend that Rebecca Hall would check into the grant possibility, then also perhaps Parks Rec could look into this as a walking trail down there that could be used by city residents, and also, of course, considering the easement that could be granted this way.
Franklin County was the first area where this was discovered, right?
Yeah, it was discovered in Franklin County.
And then Henry County, somebody found some.
Owen, and then Henry. There's only one in Henry County. There's only a couple in Owen. Franklin County has two.
One plant?
One population. Like, only two in Owen, and they're not very viable. Really, Franklin County is the only.
Plants are not like us. They're about single.
Does it sound like there's one? One cluster?
More than one cluster.
Okay.
Yeah, as I said earlier, I mean, Franklin County is really a hub, and while that was the Nature Preserves Commission, you know, there's been more done for recovery of this species in Franklin County than probably anywhere else.
In the whole world.
It doesn't occur a little bit in Tennessee, but by far most of the work has gone on here.
And, yeah, there's only, like, four or five populations in Tennessee. Franklin County is the place where we have to focus for conservation of this species.
Commissioner Och has a question. Or comment.
I think it's a little of both. So one option would be to grant, to give it over to a conservation group, and then they take care of it. That's one option. Another option is to get some grants and put in a walking path and that kind of thing, and then you could also have that combined with the easement. Now, and then I assume you could, who would be in charge of paying, covering the cost of maintenance and everything else under that option?
The city would be. If that's a city park, you know, and of course, I'm, the Parks Department's responsible for maintaining Cove Springs, so I think they would be responsible for this.
I'm just making sure I get this straight, that's more, you know, that's more money we would be spending. And I guess my other question, and I don't know if it's time for that one yet or not to ask maybe Jeff, is I would want to make sure that the, and I'm familiar with the geography, so that y'all are probably right on the money, but I would want to make sure that those 44 acres cannot be developed, and I would want to make sure that if we do this, that we don't detract from our ability to sell the remaining 25 acres or anything else around there. You know, I think that's a critical piece for us, to know whether or not this is going to take away from what we're trying to do already, and to make sure we can't develop these 44 acres.
You're asking Jeff a question?
I'm asking, I think Jeff's the right person to ask.
It depends on who you're talking to, is whether you could develop them. I mean, somebody will find a way to develop them if that's what you want done. Right now, you have access to acreage out there that hadn't been developed yet that we still need to sell. I would bear away from trying to do anything that would hinder you from doing something later down the line. I think that would be the big thing, because the 25 acres that goes with that is very developable, and it's very, it lays good, it's easy to develop, and it would be, you wouldn't want to hinder by something you did on the backside, having restrictions on what you can do on the front side.
There's no intent to, you know, to reduce that development on the developed side. This project would strictly be in an area that could not be developed and wouldn't interfere with that. Now, you may need some sort of reassurances or some confirmation to that, but that's our.
Yeah, and that, you know, that ridge does go out and drop off pretty quickly to a pretty steep slope. So it's fairly obvious what's, you know, where the forest is and where it's, you know, it's steep and haven't been proved.
The developable land is a wonderful piece of land. I mean, it's a nice flat, and it lays very beautifully. But then that drop-off, I mean, sure, I guess you could fill it up with dirt and destroy the plant, and do something with it, but it's really a forested area, and so I don't think anyone who wanted to buy that land would be at all interested in that area down here, because I don't think they could use it.
Now, we have talked about different uses for that property, and one of the uses we've talked about is a recreation facility at some point, and if they wanted to put their own walking trails in, in that area, or use that for a recreational bike path or something of that nature, that would be the one thing that could restrict them from wanting that particular area. They could not use the forested area to put bike paths in and to put, I mean, I think you could put restrictions on it, I think, but it'd be, I would want to be very careful in completely restricting it from use.
Yeah, Gary and Molly brought that up several times.
Well, and with an easement, you can either provide it or it's going to, thanks.
Yeah, here allows you to just stay with the same, you know.
But if you sell the property, wouldn't you be selling it? I would think if I were buying the property, I would love having the nature to work at out my office window. So for me, that would be an enhancement to buy the property, to know that that's a natural state, and I can watch the critters as I sit at my desk or whatever.
Yes, I think this is probably a great idea and an idea I can support later, which is, I'm inclined to think that it's maybe not a good idea to do it now, but a better idea to do it at a later date after we see where everything plays out as far as our ability to sell land over there and to sell the developed land, and then it may make more sense then. Now, I realize you may end up losing it that way. I understand that. But, you know, once we've done this and we've put these restrictions in, it's over. And if that ends up impeding our ability to sell the land, the other land, then I don't see, I think it might be better to wait.
I don't see why it would impede our ability to sell the other land. If you can't build on that forested area anyway, I'm kind of with Commissioner Hale. I think anybody that would develop there would consider that forested area an asset, especially if we could put some trails in through there and leave it alone and not concrete the trails and just leave it natural, I would think that would enhance any.
I think you might be right, but we're not developers. So my guess is our ability to guess what they're going to want to do is, we don't have, my guess is, we don't have any idea. So that's why I'm worried about doing it.
Well, as a commissioner, let me just say that, you know, originally, we weren't going to develop any of that over there, but then we did, piece by piece. And I think it's real important for the citizens that we have some space in our city that's a natural environment. And, you know, we started with Cove Springs was going to be passive, and pencil property was going to be passive, and we keep moving away from the natural state of things, and we have this almost, we're compelled to develop, develop, develop everything we do, and I think to have a forest there that we really try to protect is actually good for all of the citizens and about all of the citizens and not one developer. And surely there would be some developer somewhere that would consider the forest to be an asset that would develop there, and I wouldn't want a developer there that didn't see it that way, and that's just my one commissioner's opinion, but, for whatever it's worth.
There's no developer out there that's going to pay you extra for forest land or anything else. They're only going to pay you for the land that they can develop.
Well, that's fine.
And we have sat in a room with Mr. Moore and trying to figure out the value of what it is, and it's a very hard piece of property to figure out what the value is on it. But nobody's going to pay you, if they're going to buy the property, they're going to want to be able to do what they want to do with what they purchased, especially if they're paying what we've got it priced at now, which is developed land prices. I mean, it's, they're going to want to be able to do with their property what they want to do with it. And there's no developer out there that you're going to change their thoughts or feelings on that, because it's going to have to be profitable. So we either need to adjust the pricing we have on the property to sell it, I mean, or, you know, regardless what happens here, you either need to let them do what they're going to do with the property, or you need to take it out of the equation.
Commissioner Roach, you know, I think that Mr. Hancock has provided a good answer for us in the sense that it might be in everyone's interest, the developer, the city, the citizens, for the city to simply give that portion of the property to the land trust and subtract it out from the developable land, in which case the developer is going to have the prime property if he wants to develop. And he's not going to care about this easement over here. He might look at the birds out of his window and the animals, but he has no interest in that, and he hasn't paid for it, so he doesn't have to give anything with it. So perhaps the commission would consider that as their first priority, to simply.
Separate the part.
Separate the pieces of property so that the undevelopable portion could be preserved, and it would have no effect upon the sale of the developed part.
And then if we did that, Rob, like, if citizens could still go onto that land?
Oh, yes, and when we, well, you explain that, Deborah, or Andy, that, I mean, when we have an easement.
Well, if the land trust held the easement, yes, I mean, you could have, you could have those.
Okay.
If the city held, if Parks could allow it.
I was going to say, wouldn't another option be that just the city keeps the land and keeps it in the condition that it is as part of the Parks Department? So we don't necessarily have to, not that I'm against giving it to the land trust, I don't mean that, but just that way it stays city property, and you accomplish the same thing, or would you not?
Well, you do in the short run, except.
Well, not quite. So it's not quite, and I mean, again, it's giving the Parks Department yet one more burden, and it seems to me that they're loaded with responsibility. And this, I think, would be a little bit of a different type of opportunity for the city to, you know, to save this, to conserve this property into perpetuity without costing the city any money. Mr. Roach? Not a dime.
You know, I picked up on that early on. Thank you, Miss Stumbo. I'm on it. Mayor, I think we need to look at it from a legal perspective, because the city, as you know, is not entitled to donate either money or property unless it's aligned with a duty the city would otherwise have to carry out, so.
Are you saying now, so that's illegal for the city to do that?
I'm saying it needs to be reviewed, Ms. Dumbo. I don't think you can make a decision tonight. You have to look at whether, is, at whether the city donating the property to a nonprofit so that it could use the property as it wants, whether or not that's legal.
so that it could use the property as it wants, whether or not that's legal, or whether it would be better to donate it to the state and then let the state decide what to do with it. Because you can donate property, you can give property to another governmental entity. So, anyway, I think certainly the legal perspective needs to be reviewed.
But we can give them an easement.
We can sell them an easement at a very reasonable price.
A dollar.
Does the Parks Department have any comments on it?
Well, I'm not really familiar with property, but I know, I think probably what they're talking about would, especially if you had trails or something like that, I think it would enhance the sale of the other developable property. When the carpenter farm was first built, Andrew and I looked at putting a trail all the way around, you know, when they were talking about putting up the possibility of a fitness center in the middle and stuff like that. So, but I'm not familiar with the land, but I can kind of pick it up once you talk to me.
And I think you would definitely want to look at whether you can construct a trail all the way around the carpenter farm because if, you know, that's one of the things the city seems to have been trying to do within the last five to 10 years is to have more trails in the city for walking and bicycling. So certainly that's an option as well. So are we at the point where we are going to research some options? Like, one option being the giving it away via the state or director, whatever, seeing what's legal. Another option might be to maintain it and jazz it up with grants or whatever. And another option would be to do nothing. Those would be three.
It's been owned for how?
They've done anything for years.
How long have you all owned, were you?
Eighty-nine, ninety?
Right, eighty-nine, ninety.
Something in that range.
Oh, wait, for how long?
Since eighty-nine or ninety, still haven't finished.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
In that range, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-nine.
Right.
Ninety?
I think that's about the time.
So it's, we're kind of in a research area?
That's the consensus of the commission.
I think so. The background on that was that property was purchased to keep the state forensic lab here, to keep those jobs from going out of town. And so the cost of the property has been recovered. So everything now is a profit. So it's not a situation of trying to get an investment back. Always, we always try to get return, the best return we can. But if we can preserve this plant that has been very profitable to the city in terms of getting the grants and developing Cove Spring, then I think we owe it to nature.
We owe it to the plant.
The plant that you.
Well, Rock Crest is very, very good to the city. You owe it to the plant.
That's a new one. Take that one back to DC and tell it.
But if, if it's, how much would you think it would, if you have just a guess of it, if parks had to absorb that, if it was developed into a walking, the cost?
Forty acres?
Just put, forty acres is about the size of the first part of Cove Spring. A third part of Cove Spring is right at fifty-five, right? So you're a perfect piece of property, but.
It's all strung out.
Yeah. I don't know without.
But we don't have to develop all of it.
I'm going to go out and see. I haven't, I'm not even sure.
It's just, you know.
It'll be another ballgame.
Those are what sort of round.
Since it's good information, I couldn't make this decision. I don't know the area.
Just get us some information on the commission interview. I know that our planning director needs to add a couple.
Okay, okay.
Now, we're just going to share the value of the hillside. And I totally support conservation use of the concept of land. But there is value, even if it's not buildable. If the upper land was going to be used for residential purposes and we left it as one entire sixty-nine acre tract, they would benefit from the density available on the unbuildable hillside to put more units up top. Whereas if we totally separated it and transferred it, they would not have that benefit of, that density would be lost. So there is a value there if it was residential. On the commercial side, we have a floor area ratio maximum, how big a lot cover you can do. So while it's a hillside, we count that as part of your lot, it is all one lot. But conservation easement doesn't take away from either of those scenarios, whether it's conservation law and the developer built it, you still have the benefit of having the density count towards this property, even though it's conservation. But that's a distinction between selling it and or an easement factor that you might be considering in the process.
That's one of the alternatives you really hadn't, hadn't brought up.
The only other one that the developer, I would think, used that hillside for is to leave its runoff after it's been cleaned and gone through its process of soil, stormwater control. They're going to want to use that natural.
Right.
So there is a, an effect there. So if we do an easement, I would want to make sure that storm drainage, storm flow would be allowed to maintain and to use without, for the circumstances. Just not to muddy it up, just as a link, economic value that I see as keeping it on track.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, clarify for you, Ed, isn't the population of Bronze Rock Crest across a creek or a drain of some sort from where the actual developable? You know, it's kind of on one ridge and the plants are sort of across the creek and on the other side. So, I mean, at least, and kind of getting at your comment there, you know, because we review those things too, the types of development projects, and that would be one, you know, the thing that we wouldn't have concern over because it was on the opposite creek. You're not going to impact plants by having stormwater.
The stormwater wouldn't hurt that plant because it's on the other side.
Right. Yeah, we surveyed that one side and just have not found it there, so.
The last comment I had is if we were to sell product, I would encourage the city to consider having an easement on the land that we are selling for pedestrian pathways, non-bike lanes. So we would have the developers still put it in to be, be ordered grant, that would be something, something you chose to go for.
So if you did, if the city went ahead and blocked out an easement of, say, forty-five acres, whatever it is, they went ahead and blocked that out, then Jeff could sell it for a little less and maybe sell it faster. Is that what you're saying?
I don't think it'll be faster. No. Developers don't like any strings attached. And this is a string that we'd be adding. It isn't there today. It would be easier for the developer to buy just the upper and not count the bottom. But since it's all one track now, that is a value that the commission easement set in various density, outage, that's value, as well as the ability to use it for stormwater. Those are only two things that realistically could be done. But you ever been to Hollywood, the equal ounces on craters? Slopes, so you never know what could happen.
So if you did an easement on the property, you can still sell it. Just to be clear.
And we do have an easement on that property, the front part of the property, we have a, is an architectural easement.
An archeological.
That's it.
For the.
So you already have an easement. And a power on the park.
Up front.
I just think we should step, divide it, separate the forty-four from the twenty-five.
Well, it sounds like.
And mark it to twenty-five.
Sounds like we'll get some information, research back, and next available discussion will be probably January. Do deer eat the rock crest?
I hope not.
Because there's a bunch of deer out there.
Thank you.
You said raffle?
Wow, aren't you?
What do you mean?
I just thought it's hard to explain.
I don't even know if you want to show.
I'll just add one thing, you know, sort of as an outsider looking in at this, you know, we have a situation on another project where we have a, have a situation where there's sort of shared ownership interests in a piece of property, conservation land, and, you know, where sometimes state or municipal governments aren't eligible for certain types of money, private groups are, particularly through NRCS, you know, to do, you know, municipal removal and other types of things that might help parks manage the property. So, you know, just bring that up because that seems to be the norm these days, the more, more times that government and private organizations can team up, I think it increases your flexibility instead of diminishing your flexibility. So, you know, the, okay, here's a city property and here's woods and waters property, may not really be the best bet. It may be an easement of some sort or even some sort of license agreement or lease or, you know, something that just, you know, keeps the two organizations meshed, you know, for a longer period of time.
Okay, so today's summit, when we leave here, everybody go and.
Bike it?
No. Go and do research on the internet, find it. Just type in Bronze Rock Crest and it'll show you areas in the country where they are. Tennessee, Hartford, Franklin, has this big majority of it. So we have to be good stewards. Otherwise, we'll get knocked off the internet. I'm just kidding, but seriously, though, it does. I mean, I've looked at it forward like years ago, researching all this, because I still have not gone up to see it. Because I don't want to know where it is because I don't want to be the leak. We were worried at the time that people would go up and stomp around to go, to go look for it and just end up tramping it, tramping on it.
The populations at Cove Spring have actually increased and discovered more and seem to be a problem.
And I've still never gone, I've never asked you under this slogan.
You got some of them. The commission on tour if they'd like to. They have this norm now.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming.
I would like to, I would like to go in front of the forest.
Okay, next. OY update.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
We have an update.
Family Aquatic Center of Finance.
I'm Brown.
I didn't mind to get you down.
Let them get out.
Finance Director Dawson.
Are we ready?
What are we doing?
Family Aquatic Center.
We don't have no water.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Au revoir.
Au revoir. Thank you, Karen.
This is, this was in your agenda. Heck, I don't know if you all have it. If you don't have one, I've got copies here. This is something that we're going to have on the agenda.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. My notes, my notes, my kingdom for my notes. Do you want to see it? Hey, while he's doing that, any of you staff that want bourbon balls, they're up here.
Let's not give them all away.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, that was out of order. Strike that last comment.
As most of you all might remember, there were, there was some money available in an account, and Steve, you can clarify.
You know, we had an audit, audit account, so we had one point five million dollars in it. And it's been sitting there for fifteen, twenty years. And as a result of the new audit requirements, we are required to report to the commission what that money's going to be used for, what projects, what it's used for, that money. And so that's kind of what we're doing. We're just giving you an update. Tom, Steve, we have to not explain to you where that money's going to be.
So that money was set aside for something that we sold some of the property and we don't have to pull with anymore. So we had this money that we could spend. And we spent, we set aside money for the Crestwood Phase One and Two, and some of the money was set aside previously for the Aquatic Center. Well, Crestwood came in pretty much right on the nose of what the contract was, and so there's some money left over in that. And so some of the things that this details of what we're planning on doing with that money with your all's permission, the Bridge Street change order, there's a change order in your packet this time for rewiring and new lighting. We will, we have a project going for new ceiling tile and new lighting, but the wiring isn't up to code, so we need to replace that. So we'd like to pay for that out of this money as well as, Parks has the River View Boat Dock Expansion in here, the Green Hill Cemetery Fence and Sign Replacement. If you'll recall, we replaced the wall going up to Green Hill Cemetery. We paid for half of that this year, we'll pay half for next year. This is money to use to replace that fence along the top. And the last bit there, what's left over is kind of a split between two projects. One is the contingency for the Aquatic Center, and the other is for some parking garage equipment for the Sullivan Parking Garage, the armature that goes up and down. If you have any questions, Steve, before I answer them, or Jim.
Harry's going to go next. Did you? That's it? Oh, that was easy. Great, thank you all. Thanks for telling us about that money, too. Although I know somebody other here that can't start it, too.
I will say, this is, this is another way in public works, parks, finance, all the city departments how well we work together on different things. And we're, we're right now outfitting a Ford F-250 pickup truck with snowflow and salt spreader that we're going to help the street department do some smaller lots and things like that. So it was just a good collaboration of partners working together. I appreciate it.
Well, the commission does, too. IT, I'm sorry, because I haven't seen most of my emails today. Okay, Dennis from Forty Two Way Health Insurance, HR Director, Ms. Kathy Fields.
Unfortunately, not with regard to waving health insurance, I apologize for that. As I mentioned previously, Kentucky Department of Compensation will no longer accept employer funds beginning of January. And the city has been depositing biweekly amounts of about three dollars to twelve dollars in employees' accounts. So I'm just looking for commission direction on how we might resolve the dilemma of not being able to send a hundred, she can help you with her comp. My proposal would be to continue to run it through payroll as we have been, and we have been pulling it and sending it as employer funds and allowing it to either hit the employees' accounts as just direct income and encouraging them to then use that income they're receiving and direct it to deferred comp. So it'd be employee contribution rather than an employer contribution.
So it becomes part of the salary?
It would.
Is this that thing that Jimmy did twenty years ago where somebody wasn't getting two dollars and we started giving?
It is. It's from nineteen ninety-one. It hasn't been revisited for a long time, so the.
So why are we spending this money? Does anybody even know why we did it in ninety-one? Does anybody even know why we did it in ninety-one?
It's exactly what you said. In nineteen ninety-one, the city felt like they were trying to make what they gave everybody more equal, and so they came up with these amounts, and they haven't been revisited for many years. So they don't really make sense anymore. have it been revisited for many years, so they don't really make sense anymore. Um, but they did, they did at that time, there was some logic behind it, but it just kind of went dormant and continued to run for a long time.
How much is it a month?
Two to twelve dollars.
No, I got that, I'm looking at the total.
Annually, it's in the mid-seventies.
Thousand?
Yes, about seventy-five thousand for three hundred employees. Every full-time employee receives a contribution, and those contributions range from, um, like three hundred and sixty bucks to about eighty-five dollars per year. So eighty-five dollars per year on the low end, and like three hundred and sixty on the high end.
That would be us on the low end.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowles, clarifying that for me.
And one of the things I'll say, too, I would like to keep employees who have received this benefit, even though it doesn't necessarily make a ton of sense from when it was developed in 1991, um, but you may want to, we may want to just grandfather existing employees in and starting in 2015, just not continuing, and it will, I have seen your expression, and in twenty years it would phase out.
So, your idea is to just start paying them forward straight up so that, so that it's not violating the law?
Tacked onto the salary.
Yeah.
We actually are doing that right now, it, it shows on employees' checks, but then it doesn't actually hit their net, because it hits their check and then we take it and we end up robbing it to Kentucky Department Comp as an employer contribution. So there'd be little process exchange for us to do that. We could do a lump sum payout if we wanted to do lump sum, but I know...
I thought you said we couldn't do that.
Generally, uh, I would have the opposing, usually that doesn't apply, so...
I can see that's a problem.
Um, so options could be just continue it, route it to another carrier who would accept employer funds, we did have someone reach out to us and say they were aware that Kentucky Department Comp wouldn't accept the money, we will. The only thing is, is that our employees contribute a larger amount to deferred comp, and so that would be awkward, I, I wouldn't recommend that we've got...
To do the middle one.
Yeah, I think that's kind of messy.
Now, why would you not recommend discontinuing it effective January 2015?
I wouldn't recommend it, because to me, that's an employee, uh, that's something that employees receive, so it's taking something away.
But we could phase it, we could phase it out. Grandfather it out.
But on, on the flip side, too, that, some of the amounts are pretty nominal, so there may not be a whole lot of backlash for the, the smaller amounts, the people that are getting three dollars, I don't know, um...
Maybe I'm misunderstanding you, but right now it goes into their account, but you take it out and you pay it to somebody, so they don't use it.
They don't see it, it goes into the retirement account.
So if you just continue...
It's going into their 401K.
They make the same amount of money.
Yeah, it would, well...
No. You're taking it away from them.
We're taking it away from their future.
Yes.
They're taking it away from their retirement account.
From their future.
Retirement account, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I think I got it. Um, I'd, I'd be for, if there's support for it, I'd be for phasing it out. I wouldn't be for grandfathering it, but like, say, you know, four years from today or whatever that magic number is, it's, we're done. I'm not saying that's the number, but I would be for getting, getting out of it. Doesn't seem making sense to me.
And I could support that, uh, but whatever we do, I hope we put some kind of annotation in while we're doing this, so, uh, people fifteen years down say, well, they re-upped it in 2014, it was from something they did in 91, they didn't understand it then, so they just continued it.
In 91, they did it for a reason that we, we have lost track of and it no longer exists.
The reason that they did this in 91 was to try to equalize what the city was contributing to employees, because at that time, the cost of medical benefits was much different, and the contributions were hazardous and non-hazardous, employees was much different. So, believe it or not, that difference of like twenty-two dollars a month, they felt, um, kind of equalized people who have single coverage versus family coverage and so forth.
Yeah, we single people saved the city a lot of money, right?
Well, it, it's shocking, but back in 91, the family coverage was something like ninety-three dollars a month.
Wow. And single was...
It was just crazy low. So there really wasn't a lot of difference between the coverage, the cost for employees and families, and it's much, much different now.
So what do you recommend? You said grandfather is what you recommended, is that right? And Commissioner, you want to just phase it over a few years, right? I could go either way.
Having given my thoughts, the person I heard about...
Oh, you already said things.
We're gonna have to decide the money.
Yeah, we don't have...
January first.
Well, really, um, we need to decide somewhat before then, because we will be running pay in late December that will hit on, I think, January second, is that right?
So you do, you do need an idea of what the question wants to do tonight.
Yeah, we need to, to know, because that payroll's coming up pretty quickly, um...
You go with your recommendation, if you write some nice note about us in the bottom.
Okay, so that, so that would be to...
I want to see where everybody else is, I'm not for continuing this in perpetuity.
Grandfather would be like...
I mean, we, we just got it, we just got an insurance tax thing, said we lost four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars in November. We, we just are talking about, and it may be a great idea, but maybe developing trails on a new, on forty-four acres, which is gonna cost money, and our, our revenue for two thousand, I know I'm always the Debbie Downer, our revenue for 2014 is down over 2013.
Okay, so you want to go four years or two years?
Well, I don't know, whatever, I just want to see what everybody says, I'm just not necessarily for letting it go forever.
I could, I could go with a, a number, if you pick a number. You picked four. What, what is the advantage of four years, other than...
I, I'd go one more year and then say it's done.
Yeah, I, I think one year to be able to tell people, this is what's happening, and then do it.
And then that would actually take care of people who are new hires, because there's a one-year wait before you get these bi-weekly contributions anyway, so anyone hired in 2015 wouldn't hit the year, so...
One year? I could do that.
What were you gonna say from HR? What was your recommendation?
I think Commissioner Hill's...
She's withdrawing hers now.
Yeah, I, I withdraw, I think Commissioner Hill's suggestion makes sense. The amounts are relatively small administratively, it doesn't make a ton of sense anymore.
It gives people a year to adjust their budget, although it's not really their budget...
It's their future.
But it gives them a year to...
It's their future.
That's okay. I don't want, I don't want people, uh, 'cause that's in on the record here. We need to realize that the, that the city and everybody I think knows it, we, we pay a ton of money toward all of our retirement. It's, it's, depending on what year it is, it's sixteen to nineteen percent and thirty-four to thirty-nine percent. So we do do a ton. This is kind of a, very, 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 very small, so I don't want us to think that we're jeopardizing our future.
Well, we have to cut out a cup of coffee once a week in their future, that...
Okay. That's enough.
It's not an oxygen tank at somebody's, nothing, I'm sorry, that was a joke, that's a joke. Anything on the tentative agenda?
I got a lot of questions.
Oh, there's something on the consent calendar, I'm doing, uh, something similar, but I'll just ask about it, because I can't remember what it is now. You got a lot of things on there. So I was about to say, I can't remember which one, we'll take two of them, so it'll be the one to hold the meeting. Um, hopefully if anybody has any staff, if it's a short, you can hit.
No, for finance, Chief Abrams?
Yes, sir. We'd like to add one item on the consent agenda, our old back truck needs some serious repair work, and this will require permission action to do that, and we think it would substantially increase the life of the vehicle. We'd like to add that.
If there's no objections standing to the consent agenda...
Nice description.
HR?
This wasn't part of the agenda formally, but I'd also like to seek commission input with Active Fitness. Uh, our employees are aware they may use that facility through the end of 2014, but I do feel I need to get some communication to employees in terms of the status for 2014.
So that, you, you said you want to, you know, continue through 2014, but in 2015, we don't have a contract, because they owe us money.
Yeah, we have not had a contract with them for over a year, and it is correct, they do owe us money.
How much is it?
Five.
Was it three thousand?
We do have a YMCA, uh, which we've started, and we have eighty-five people sign up for YMCA membership.
Well, can I ask a question, if they owe us money? What is the question you're asking, do we want to have membership again, is that what, to learn our...
If we're going to continue any ongoing relationship with Active Fitness, because...
Well, are they gonna pay us back the money, I mean...
How long have they owed us money? They haven't owed us for a long time, since I've been on the commission.
So, then they need to give us a free amount of time? Is that, is that what you're asking?
I mean, I guess you could do a trade-out.
We're not paying them that much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, so... I'm just asking, I would like to communicate to employees what the status is...
But why would we not continue to use them then?
So, employees are still using them, so, I guess if employees are still using it, let them do it, as long as that works.
They may.
Why would we not?
Because some people may want to go there for...
I'm lost again, hold on real quick.
Why would we not?
All right. I think, okay, how many employees are going, using it?
Probably, very few.
All right, very few tenants, and they owe us money, and we're using it, but we're not paying them that?
Correct, we have no, we haven't had a contract for about fifteen months.
Right, and you were trying to get a contract renewal or something way back when, that didn't go anywhere, right?
We have not, we, that's correct.
Okay. So we're thinking about continuing, not paying, because they're not paying us.
I don't understand.
Is there any legal problem with this man? They're all robbed. I'm gonna need a little bit more explanation, because I didn't know that they owed us money. And my, my understanding was...
Yeah, occupational tax and... Positive information I can give...
So that's, that's what they owe us, is occupational tax and property tax, not some other amount.
Not that I'm aware of, it would be fun, that would be a substantial profit.
If they owe us that kind of money, if it's occupa, if it's tax money, I think we ought to collect that rather than taking it out through a set-off. So, and are, are they, are they charging us a, a specific amount for the ten employees that are still using them and then we're setting that off against the tax money that they owe the city?
I think we are, but we're not. They think that we are, they think that that makes up for the lack of tax money. Is that what you think?
That's what I think, that's just me.
Then we need to cut it off.
I don't go there, never.
Well, let's just figure, let's get a response, if they're gonna pay their taxes or not, and they have to pay their taxes, if they're trying to refuse that for whatever reason, I don't know what that'd be, and then figure out what our employees are doing and how much that the membership fee is.
And my understanding is that we had switched to the YMCA, that was... I think this might be another one where it's time to just get out. Sounds like another mess.
And collect.
We have to...
We don't have a contract.
Let's just, let's just stop it. As of December 31st.
And I will know.
This is, we're getting ready to have a problem.
Yeah, because we can't do this, I didn't use a contractor as what I found out, because I always check to make sure the people that I hire have up-to-date everything, and somebody didn't, I definitely can't use you.
Mr. Mueller?
Yes, um, would like to add, hopefully add one thing to the agenda, which would be a offer of employment for a planner, but it's still in the works, if I could get it done within the deadline, I'd like to have to add it not to...
A planner position?
Yeah, filling, filling a vacancy.
We were talking like a...
And then, um, November 21st, I sent y'all an email, uh, explaining where we're at on historic, uh, changes with texts and boundaries. I also put one in your box, I have the extras. Staff is needing a little bit of direction on, uh, the South Frankfurt boundaries, so we can schedule that for a future work session. I will be before you next month for a weight finding update with our consultant, and I believe a discussion of demolition is... So Gary, you, you, you want our sort of preference as to what part of South Frankfurt we would want to be in the preservation area? Yes, to help staff start the discussions with the public and zoning update committee to have a deal from the commission.
Could you, could you email us some, I mean, obvi, I, you know me, I already know what I think, but could you email us some possible options, you know, so that people could be thinking about it, and then at the next work session, we could, everybody could give you what they think, and we could roll on on that, rather than being in the ear and still being talked about.
And it's the last page of the email handout, was really what the discussion was about. Last two pages. Yes, I'll be happy to provide additional options, including...
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
What else you want more than, I had sent you the email from one of the residents of downtown, and asked about the formalization, or is there any kind of written agreement between the city and the National Guard and the airport on the flight paths, and you didn't really have anything in writing, do you think that that's something that we should talk to them about in a cordial way?
Um, tomorrow night, uh, here at City Hall, is the Joint Land Use Study Innovation Committee, and they're finalizing their recommendations through that public committee. And also on that discussion, there's a member, a draft memorandum agreement between the county, the city, and the guard. That specific is not identified, but it could be added, and that memorandum agreement is going to go from this committee, to the planning commission, to the city commission, and at that point, we'll, um, we'll be able to tweak it further than where it's at now.
Well, can I ask, since, um, is it, does the commission have any problem, and if you don't want to make a decision on that, it's fine, with us trying to put some points in a draft that we can all review, and then we could send that to the National Guard? Some of the things that, informal things, where I've had discussions last year with the tag, the adjutant general and others, have, they've been very cooperative, very easy to work with, and said, you know, we'll, yeah, we'll quit flying these times and changing their patterns, but it turns out that a lot of the complaints were not as a result of our National Guard units, it was from, out of...
Visiting.
Visiting aircraft. And so some folks have gotten the impression that our National Guard unit is the one that's...
Disregarding.
Disregarding, which is not, from everything that we have found, is not the case. And so maybe if we could put that in a draft and let the commission review it, and maybe they could all add something or take away, or just say, no, looks good, then when people call us, we can say, we have, as a city commission, done our best to look out for the benefit of the community, and we all do care, because I know everybody here does. Would that be appropriate, you think?
Certainly.
Since it's...
Now's the part of time we're creating a memorandum agreement called Parks and Death.
So nobody, is that okay with everybody? So will you do that?
Yes.
I'll sheepishly ask.
I can...
One more thing, but because, because you're gonna have all the...
I'll do it, I understand, and I'll shoot it to you.
Okay, you can send it to the city manager first. Okay, you can send it to the city manager first, and then we can get it to us, however the protocol is for that.
I just have a question about this. I want to make sure I understood. You said, I'm looking at these last two questions, and I like this. Would you like to increase the areas that we're going to, that we're working on?
Correct. Based on the last few conversations, I understand. And I'm just trying, I didn't want to, it'd be nice to go to the public and to the zoning update committee who's reviewing this with a general idea of public commission. This is a starting point for discussion. They may come back and widen it, they may come back and shrink it. I don't know what they're going to do. I was just hoping to have a, be your public commission.
I think that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a feel of at least one commission. What I'm expecting, because I look at the area now, and I say, well, I can go to a couple of houses in there and see if I have a problem, but I don't know. You probably already have enough input, because you had public input to get to this point. So I'm trying to figure out if there's anything I need to do, other than what you've already done.
If you, no, if you're comfortable with what's there, I can go forward with that.
Thank you, I'm so comfortable.
But I'll still provide a couple more.
Mr. Parrish?
All good unless you all have some questions about anything.
I just wanted to report that on Friday, December fifth, the representatives from the Office of Transportation Delivery were on-site at the Transit Department for about four hours and conducted their annual site visit and compliance review. And Transit was found to be in complete compliance with no fines, so.
Can I ask you one question? I'm losing it. Wait a minute, it's coming back. The early discussion, are you going to work with trying to seek a grant for that area?
Yeah, I'm going to contact official wildlife to see what we need to do to get it.
Okay. I didn't see you shake your head when that recommendation, okay.
Mr. Moore?
I don't think I have to say.
City clerk?
Bradley?
Any help this week?
I don't lie. I got a lot.
I've got some light ones. One, I'd like to hear a report of what happened on the, since I was not able to make the Christmas ride. I understand some people here did.
Oh, it was nice.
Didn't hear it.
The Christmas ride?
The Christmas, no, rode in the parade.
The trolley.
Rode in the trolley in the Christmas parade. Was it nice?
It was nice.
Do I candy? Does that understand?
I have a worker's copy issue. I've kind of tended right here.
There was one guy on that thing that had a Santa Claus hat on with his name on it.
Was it you?
John Sauer had a...
I had more candy than anybody. I distributed the candy, including among other elected officials. What do you want?
He's so egalitarian. It was fun. We threw it out. There's four, what was there, four of us?
Yeah.
Two magistrates and us, and it was real nice.
Well, next year, Mayor, if you could be Santa Claus on the front, the rest of us could dress like little elves and hang out the window.
I'm going to leave that one to you, Commissioner.
I'll get the costumes together.
I don't want to infringe on their union rights.
My second, my second question, because this one's going downhill real fast. I did want to hear an update, because we had two people that went to Austin, Texas.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I would like to hear how that went, because it's a KLC function, and I'd like to update.
I'd like to do that for first meeting in January.
Okay, we'll get your part then. What about you?
I'm going to do the same thing, and then, but, no, and I've got a, one of my items is related to that. Because we, what we, what he, what John and I have done is we have, we have met since then, made a list of things. He has a list of things from exhibitors to give to various people here at City Hall. And then I wrote down a number of things that I'd like to see if we couldn't do that we learned down there.
City clerk, kind of question. Do you have the travel authorization forms? I was going to do the US Compters of Mayors. That reminded me of January.
I can put, I would have to print it out for you.
Okay, I need to get one, so I can get that signed.
Sure.
Probably, if I could get it tonight, would you all sign it, the US Compters of Mayors?
Without objection.
Thank you. Because I don't have all the numbers handy. And then, I was going to do that in the plane hour, the joint meeting, and then ended up having to go grab some food and ran into a commissioner and a magistrate, and then I didn't get the time to read. Donates.
I don't have anything else.
I don't know if mine is old or new.
What is it?
Well, I wanted to mention to Chief Abrams, it's the email about KSC having a march to Capitol. And I think the police have done an excellent job in the past with any of the little protest things in town. And so I would really hope that, again, you all would just be so police-friendly of being able to maintain that perfect balance that you all have in the past, of keeping things orderly, but not making it look like we're, you know, in a police state.
If I could real quick, actually, just before the meeting, I heard back from one of the leaders from the fraternity sponsoring the march. And I think we have reached an area of agreement that's going to be beneficial to both sides. And hopefully, I think the initial intent was to actually walk down the street on East Main and I talked with him, and I think we've worked out something that's going to, like I said, be mutually beneficial. And we're going to escort them and make sure that they get there safely, and they're able to exercise their First Amendment rights, and escort them back to make sure that they're safe as well. So I'm hoping that, to meet with them at eleven-thirty on Wednesday and facilitate that, as slowly as possible.
Great. I think you all do a great job, and I was just, I was sure that you probably were. And then, since this is my last work meeting.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to really say how much I really enjoyed. I don't want to get emotional. I knew I was going to do that. But I've really enjoyed working with everybody. You all have been great. It's been a wonderful experience. The staff has been wonderful. I've always, you know, I always have questions, and you all have been able to very kindly explain things to me. And I just really appreciate it. I think the citizens of Frankfurt are really blessed to have a great body of public officials that you all are, and Commissioner Sauer, and the staff, because you all are responsive, and you care, and you do a great job.
Commissioner Hale, I want to tell you that I think we all appreciate you too, especially because you've got that whole issue that ended up in a meeting today, that I think is going to bring some resolution to a longtime problem. And so you, I think you brought it to the table here, so I think you're going to be missed, by me, anyway.
You can still send us information.
You can still come and bring, bring recumberment.
Appreciate you.
Yes, same here. And we'll get a chance to get a separate formal meeting.
Well, I didn't want to say anything at the formal meeting, because I knew I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to do it without getting emotional, and I don't want to get emotional on cable.
Well, but it would be a different kind of emotion than sometimes people see on cable, too, though.
Oh.
Well, I'll do, I mean, we do appreciate you spending the time, and I mean, you've put a lot of time and research on things that have helped us all. And we appreciate it. Benefit, to the benefit of the community.
I can see why you didn't know whether it's going to be on the old or new. Good job.
Commissioner Barris?
You might come back as new someday. I have a piece of business, but it's not old, it's new.
Okay, well, can we, we'll do old business. You don't know, you had old business?
I do.
Is it old?
I think it's old. I'd like to see if we could have, I guess it's kind of old and new, but I think it's closer to old. The Stormwater, I'd like for us to have, schedule a special meeting on that topic in...
December?
January.
I was trying to give Dawn, Commissioner Hale, one more.
I was purposefully not including Commissioner Hale, because I'm sure she doesn't want to be.
Okay.
But I'd like to have, I'd like to have actually two special meetings in January. One would be to, so one would be for Stormwater, and, you know, sort of have an educational element, plus, and, plus the stuff that we've gotten in the past, and go over that. And just so everybody has a good idea of what we have to do, what minimums, mediums, and maximums mean, what costs and benefits mean, those kind of things, so that we can proceed, because we've got to go ahead and do that. And I know that Tom's working on a permit and that kind of thing, too, which are due like now. So I guess what would be a date that would be good for you guys on that?
I'm okay with that.
We'll have some difficulty.
You do?
Mayor's conference legislature. Day or night?
I don't, I think whatever works for you guys. I just know we got to go ahead and get on the Stormwater. We really don't have a lot of time. We've kind of put that off, and I, and I was part of that, and was fine with that. But now I think we've got to go ahead and see where we are and do, see what we're going to do.
Could that happen like when we do our planning? Are we going to do a planning?
That was my next one.
Okay. I mean, maybe we could combine those two.
Well, I think you probably could. Maybe we could have a special meeting where we did Stormwater, and we did the items we wanted to do.
For planning?
Goals, you know, and I'd like to, rather than calling it goal setting, although we can stay with that term, but you know, what, what tends to happen with goals is that the items end up being so broad that nobody knows what in the world they are. I think our first year that we did it, in 2013, we were narrower. And as Commissioner Haynes said a lot of times, we got almost, got almost all of them done. I think in 2014, they were broader and a little bit squishy. And I'm not real sure that they were, we got as much done. So I'm thinking that if we could email the items we'd like to see done in 2014 to the city manager, then we could come in like we did in 2013, and they can be on the wall, and then we all give them a number, and then we do the most important ones first, and then try to get the other ones done later in the year. That seemed to work really well year before last.
Yeah, if we had it written down, it always works.
Remember, they had them all up here?
Always works better.
And we went and put numbers by them? So if we could do both of those things, and if somebody could email us to get our items in at by a certain time, and then if there's Stormwater stuff that we could be studying or reading ahead of time before the special meeting, we could get that done, too, be studying it. So that gets us to the date.
I have a question. You know, usually when I think of goals, I think of the goal, and then there's the objectives, and how you meet the goal. And so when you email each other the goals, could you also email each other the objectives, that what you think?
Well, Dawn, I think it makes perfect sense, but for some reason, we've kind of struggled with what a goal is and what an objective is. So I wonder if we're not better served by just having a measurable item.
Well, you know, the objective.
Things you want to do, a specific item you want to do.
Well, the objectives are the measurable items, but I think generally, when you do goal setting, you start out with goals that tend to be more abstract and policy-oriented. And then you work down from that to your objectives. So I think maybe what, I mean, I want, what we did last year, we got things done that we could actually measure, and that's good. So I think if we all start thinking between now and January, what is the goal that we would like to have accomplished, or at least be well on the way to when the commission leaves in two years? But the objectives would be what we actually want to say, this happened in our term, and this moved us this much closer to the goal, which would be more abstract and more general, that could be continued on with the next commission. But I like, we did objectives the first time. That's what we did. We didn't do goals.
That's why, that's why we got a lot of stuff done.
And so we got a lot of stuff done that we could measure. And I think that a lot of times, people say we're not far sighted enough, because those are the goals. So I think we need to have goals, and those objectives need to be in the direction of those goals. And then we can say when we leave, as you said in the forums, we did every single, every single thing that we said we would do. So, but the goal needs to be the far sighted thing out there that we're moving towards. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
Because we can accomplish lots of little things, but if it's not leading to some big goal, then we're just doing things along those.
So do you want us to email the goals, and then, then the specific things we want to do under the goals?
No, I think we need to have a conversation about, I think the conver, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, and we can maybe come to some sort of, I think the conversation needs to happen at the table. What is it that we, how do we want Frankfurt to be different in five years? How do we want Frankfurt to be different in ten years? And then, what's going to be different that we can actually say we did in two years when we, when that term ends? Do you see what I'm saying? And so we come to some sort of agreement, minus citizen engagement. And I think today, with the Buttermore Hill conversation, we helped one more neighborhood start to become more engaged. And so mine's always been that. No, we didn't adopt that as a goal, but we kind of moved that direction anyway. No, nobody, everybody poo-pooed it, except me. But, but, but we moved in that direction a little bit today. But, I mean, so if we come to the table with those things, and then we go to the objectives, because that was real effective. And we had never done that before that I can remember. But I think we need to have those conversations, because...
So I guess my only concern is, is the way things move around here, which is like a snake.
Right.
And so...
No, not if we think, if we kind of think over the next three, four weeks, what is it that we think's important for the city?
Well, let's say you're four weeks then, then you had the discussion, then you're another month for your items, then you're into March.
Well, you know what? We have five members. We could have five goals. There we go. We could have five goals. Mine, Commissioner Hale brought an issue to the table, and we started in that direction with one little neighborhood for my goal. And we can have those goals, and then we could establish the objectives that we'll measure at the end of two years. You'll go to the next forum and say, look, we did this, and this, and this, and this, and this. What do you think?
I read somebody else talk. While you all are thinking on that issue, I was, I was looking at January the nineteenth as a possible date, because we have a meeting on the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. Meetings have seemed to have worked.
That's a holiday.
Oh, I should know that.
I will.
Okay, let's look at another date.
For a special meeting?
We won't be meeting that day here. I couldn't take the heat.
Well, so we usually have that meeting, the very, just like, just bumping into the New Year right away? We used to do it on Saturdays, didn't we?
We used, we did, we've done this.
Every way.
Every which way, and it all comes out the same way.
Okay. No, we, actually...
And I say that, because when you have a body that turns over every two years, it's hard to keep the same goal. Some of them we have, we've done okay with. But it is difficult every two years to get new people on it. At one point, we got three new people and significantly changed the course, as the staff will tell you. And...
So we have the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, or the...
And the twelfth is going to be hard for me, but the meetings that I'm doing, we've got the new training for some new county officials.
Well, maybe we can do it every day.
So I can be through by five. I should be able to get back here by five. But I don't want to be the cause if you can't. January's going to be tough, other than the meeting days that we have, and the twelfth.
Twelfth is a meeting day?
Pardon me?
Twelfth is a meeting day.
That's why I said other than that. So I've got, I've got training for my other professional career, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, at Griffin Gate Marriott, which takes me about thirty-five minutes to get from there to here. Should be, I can get back by five, but... I mean, can we combine, we can, ask the staff to have a light work session meeting and say we'll do the important things, but anything else, we might just skip past if we need to. Pardon me?
I'm just asking, how are we on the first, if you say we used to do it the very first, that's the first Monday. We don't have anything on that Monday, where we have the joint thing. But we already, we're doing something that day anyways.
Well, now, let me just, let me just ask a question here. You say we're already doing something? I want to ask a relevant question. I got an invitation a week ago that has my name printed on it for ten AM on January fifth. Did that invitation leave from City Hall or from county? Did anybody in this room know anything about an invitation leaving City Hall with my name on it for ten o'clock, January fifth?
I had one on my desk.
Well, my question is, did it come from City Hall?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Did not. Okay, so does anybody know if it came from the county?
They mailed it.
Okay, so here's my, here's my...
Mine was a mail, was it? Oh, okay.
Okay, so here's my question. If nobody at this table knows anything about how that got set, then we've got a problem. There needs to be leadership on this commission. You know, I don't like reading on an invitation that arrives in my mailbox on a Saturday that I'm being sworn in at 10:00 a.m. on January 5th. And that's where I learned about my swearing in. I am an elected official. I should have some part in a conversation somewhere, whether it be at this table or whether it be through email or whether it be wherever. We can set meetings outside of a formal meeting, but at no point did I ever hear that 10:00 a.m. on January 5th, I was going to be sworn in until an invitation was printed and sent in the mail. And now I've got a problem because I don't know how many people in Frankfurt got that invitation, and I am not available on that day at that time, and I'm not available until the evening of that day. It is Faculty Institute at KSU, and I hear all this conversation about KSU and government working together. So when that invitation lists my name for 10:00 a.m. on the day of Faculty Institute, which is one of the two Mondays out of the year that I am mandated to be on campus, it is a smack in my face, and it's a smack in the face of KSU. And it is, it's disrespectful on the grounds that, Mayor, you're the only participant who actually speaks in that, in that whatever it is ceremony that's, who's not referred to as honorable. You have been dishonored on that invitation. And I have been dishonored in that the public elected me, and I should have some say-so about this body being sworn in. So it sounds like everybody else at this table and Commissioner Lexauer, you all are fine with 10:00 a.m. on January 5th. So what I want to know is where did that conversation take place? And it seems nobody knows. So if nobody at this table knows how that came to be, we've got a serious problem with relationships. And I don't want to hear anything else about working together if people can't respect each other. And that goes between city and county government, intercommunication and intra-communication, communication between this body. Somebody needs to step up to the plate and take a leadership role in that. And I don't know what I'm going to do. Am I going to go to KSU and say, "I'm elected by the people of Frankfurt, but evidently, nobody thinks I should have a vote in when this event takes place? So do I just forget that I am mandated to be at KSU at that time? Or do I forget that I need to be sworn in?" And it's just, somebody needs to step up. Somebody from this table needs to step up and take some leadership on that because I know that we can discuss those kind of things when we meet outside of a formal meeting, but it didn't work this time. The communication ran amok. And now we've got a situation. And I'm going to ask everyone at this table, please respect me and don't ever agree to anything like that. I know that if any one of you cannot make a certain time that I could, I would not say, "Yes, let's go ahead." Because I respect each one of you, and I think that each one of you needs to be there. I don't know if I can be there. I've got to meet with President Burst and say, "Look what they did. I was no part of this conversation. It was done without my input. I'm an elected official. This is what they think of me." That's embarrassing. So, Mayor, I would ask you to please have some communication, find out who did this. I would like to know who did it because I would like to know why they did it.
Well, I wasn't consulting at the time, so I...
Commissioner, what's that, or do you know anything about this?
All I know is it was coming from the county, and I received the invitation just like Doris did.
At what point did this whole thing about a joint swearing-in begin? At what point did we discuss times? Because I don't know why it's at 10 o'clock. Is this the time the county normally meets? So then it doesn't become a joint swearing-in at all? It becomes we're participating in theirs. If it's joint and both bodies are going to work it out, then both bodies need to have a voice in it. And that's where the leadership from over here needs to come in. And, and there's a problem, and it's a big problem. And you may think it's a big problem over a little bit of nothing, but if this is how we're going to start the new term, it's going to be a problem. You don't reinforce negative behavior and expect it not to keep reoccurring. So we need to say, "We're not going to be disrespected. If you're going to work with us, we're going to work together." But when you reinforce negative behavior, you reinforce disrespectful behavior, you can expect more disrespectful behavior and more negative behavior. So that's my two cents. I don't know if I'll be able to attend on January 5th at 10:00 a.m. or not. And I think it's wrong for this commission not to have consensus about when we're going to do that.
Just, just for clarification for me, the first time I heard about it was in Owensboro, the possibility of having a joint swearing-in, January the 5th, no time was given. And it's just going to be ceremonial. So I really didn't press anybody because it was just one night. I think we kind of discussed possible different ways. And I said, "Well, as long as I'm sworn in officially so that I can do my job come one in January," I was okay with it at the time. I didn't know what everybody else was thinking.
That's why we really need to, let me emphasize this, for the new commission coming in, we really need to have those conversations, even though those conversations are allowed to take place outside of a public meeting, it doesn't fare well to do so. We need to have all of those conversations right here.
Well, then we're going to have to meet every week.
So that we don't embarrass ourselves. I think that the conversations, if they started in Owensboro, was several weeks ago. So...
Months.
Months ago. So we don't need to meet every week to do that. We just need to make sure we bring our business to the table and that, I mean, I am certainly never going to vote. I don't, I can't imagine voting to go ahead and do something like that if one of the body can't be there. It's just, it's, but I mean, more, more disconcerting than that is that it appears some other entity set something for us and then informed us. Unless there was one or more of you having conversations with the county, but I wasn't privy to those, so I don't know. But I think it's highly important that we remember that the mayor is the head of this board and that any communication between this board and another entity go through our mayor and that the mayor has that direction before those communications take place. Otherwise, it's just embarrassing. So that's my two cents. And I don't know what you all want to do. The invitations are sent. It's offensive to me. It's offensive to me on several grounds. I don't like the fact that I see everybody else as honorable except my mayor. That offends me. I'm on the board with you, Mayor.
Well, I appreciate that. I did go to the county judge's office, I guess Thursday. And I had staff that apologized for that, that they wanted to emphasize that some of them were not privy to that before it went out. So I don't know if the invitations have been sent out to, other than us?
That's what I would like to know because if so, then...
And the judge wasn't there, was he?
It's a problem that we need, I think we need to address earlier rather than 12 months into the term. We're going to be working together on a lot of projects. We hope to be, so...
Well, I did express to the county judge-elect that you were in a conflict in terms of availability. It would have been Friday, I guess.
Well, I think that it's fine to work together. It's fine to support each other. But when you start having a few people make those decisions for two bodies that include a lot more people than two or three, it's not going to, it's not going to work.
Commissioner, could we sort of hit that again when we go to new business so we can kind of think about it between now and then as to where the next...
You mean in a few minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
I've said everything that I want to say. I want the public to know that if for some reason that I'm not there, that this was all done between some individuals somewhere and it didn't include me and that I am mandated to be at Faculty Institute twice a year, and that happens to be the day. So, and I'll just remind the public later. I'll maybe run an ad in the paper or whatever.
Just want to reassure you all.
Because I would never fail to show up to a ceremony like that. And even though it is just ceremonial, that's important. That's very important.
Absolutely. Just to reassure you that city clerk and I were discussing possible dates, and then the invitation arrived. We were going to ask the commission as to what dates would be suitable for the commission.
I think it's obvious where the breakdown was. I mean, it looks like, I'd say, maybe it was three or four or five weeks ago, you guys, that we sort of emailed back and forth about whether, whether or not to have a joint one or not. And I think when it was all said and done, everybody, whether they were real keen on it or not, everybody was going to say, "Hey, we'll go along with it, even if we're not jumping up and down about it." I think where the ball got dropped was is there was never any coordination between the commission and the city clerk on dates and times. And then it, then we got the date and time through the invite, which we, I think most of us knew it was coming. But, so we maybe should have said something then. But, but to the best of my knowledge, nobody called them up and said, "Let's, let's coordinate these dates before you send the invite out." So that was, so that was where the ball was dropped.
I really think, I just really would recommend that we just remember that we have a mayor. I know that the mayor in this form of government is another vote, but the mayor is also the chair. And typically, a chair is the one that communicates for a board if you're dealing with other entities. So I think that we need to allow that to happen. And I think that other people need to step back and allow that to happen. And I think that this group needs to have that conversation and that the mayor needs to then carry that information. And that needs to be worked out between the mayor and the head over there. And, but I mean, if, you know, if everybody else is fine with having their names printed on an invitation to show up to an event where they cannot show up, or maybe you all can show up, that's fine. I'm not fine with it. And I'm just going to say, I don't ever want that to happen again. I don't want to ever see my name on an invitation inviting people to come see me in a ceremony when I haven't been consulted. I don't ever want to see it on the next, for the next 24 months. So it's out there, I'm telling you. Okay?
And we will pass up, we'll have a conversation.
Okay.
With our camera parts in the camera. I think we're all sorry that the way it was, it's got at this point. And hopefully, something will happen that you can get there. I understand totally the commitments with our other work that we have to make.
Well, and let me just say, the commission has always been my priority. And that is one of two days in the 12 months that I'm mandated to be up there on Mondays. And they're very kind to not schedule me in classes on Monday. I've reserved that for city commission. And so they've worked with me on that, and I just...
But Commissioner, is there, because, you know, it's, it's December the 8th. I think maybe we can still fix this. Is there, is there a day that week or a time that's works better?
I remember...
Will 5:00 o'clock that day work?
Commissioner Lexauer asked me after the last meeting here, was January 5th okay? And I said, "In the evening." In the evening's fine.
We can communicate.
After 4:30 is fine.
Just see if that won't work?
Generally, when we have our own.
It's midnight.
We open it to public, family and friends, supporters, and the public's invited. And my comment at that time was, people aren't going to be able to park downtown and come in to watch a swearing-in for all of these officials. So it, I think it's going to leave the public out, and we are public officials.
And but if you have it at 5:00, you'll, you'll have oodles of parking.
Yeah.
So if we got the time better, it'll, it'll work out?
Sure. What? Well, you know, that's a whole other story. I think that the commission, I would rather have a city commission swearing-in, but I think the whole commission has decided to work with county government. And I'm fine if that's what people want to do. I'd rather have go the traditional route, and we have ours. And we go to theirs and wish them well, and they come wish us well, and that's great. But if everybody else at this table wants a joint swearing-in, I'm not going to stop that. I'll be where I can be, when I can be, so...
But 5:00 o'clock would work if we can get that done?
That would work.
Maybe.
We'll get back to, we'll make that call. And also getting back to old business.
So, thank you, Commissioner. Trying to figure out a day to do the stormwater and the items for 2015.
Well, if we do the 12th...
You're not going to say anything else now?
Last time I made a recommendation, it was...
I know I will be here, I can be here about 5:00 o'clock or a couple minutes thereafter on the 12th since I'm coming just back from Lexington. But I don't know if we have a light work session agenda to very minimal items that we could focus on.
Those two things?
Those two items.
Can we do that?
And Commissioner, sir.
Just a thought, you've got two items, and you've got to schedule meetings, the 12th and the 24th. Is that right?
12th and 26th.
27th.
12th and 26th. I'm sorry. Yes. My addition wasn't very good. Why not, why not do one item on the 12th and one item on the 26th? Why don't you set your goals and objectives on the 12th, which is the first meeting, you know? And then do your stormwater on the 26th?
That works for me.
That way, it won't be so long. We've got a...
Did you have a special meeting?
Small amount of time.
Oh, yeah, like the 26th, sure. We got a special meeting earlier. Is that what you're proposing, like have it during like 3:00 or 4:00?
I don't care if it's before or after the regular work session.
I think that's a good suggestion, Mayor.
I don't care.
Go with that?
I'm fine.
All right, and do it, do it with the, and then I guess if you guys can email us to get that stuff to you, and then we get some information on the stormwater.
So we're going to do goals on the 12th?
I'm a little, I'm still a little fuzzy on the goal, but, but I don't, I don't want to get us all...
Well, I mean, what we did last time is fine.
Well, maybe we can use the, everybody gives items, and then maybe we can build our goals from the items.
Actually, you do it back, you do it the other way.
I'm familiar with that.
But you know, some people start out with the last chapter in a book first, and they build to it, so, okay.
Thanks.
Just don't ruin the ending for us.
Okay.
All right.
So what time are we doing the 12th? For the goals?
Midnight. It's a joke. I'm trying to lighten things up.
We're going to do 5:00. Yeah, it's like midnight would be good for me.
I know Bill's up.
I'll come at midnight. 5:00, we're going to do...
Just do the regular, because Bill can't be back till 5:00.
Oh, okay.
This would just be an item, a work session, but the staff will keep the work session here.
Okay.
And then do we want to do the other one, before, after, Mayor?
Whatever y'all want to do.
On the 26th, y'all want to do before, after on stormwater?
I can go either way.
I don't want to go after, because stormwater could, I don't know how much time it'd take.
Is 3:00 o'clock too early? Or 4:00? Y'all thought? 3, 4, 5?
How long do you think the presentation and stuff would be, Tom?
How many questions are you going to ask?
Well, you know, you've already, I've already gotten briefed ahead of time so that I don't take too long.
It didn't take that long to...
No, you did such an exceptional job. I think it was only 30 or 40 minutes.
Well, if it's not only that, do you want to do it on the 12th?
No, it'll take a while.
Take a while, okay. Just don't... Do you want to make that be the first item on our, our meeting?
How about, how about, did you want after on the 26th? Is that what you said?
It didn't matter.
How about 3:00 on the 26th?
That's fine. That's fine.
That would be. Are you okay with it?
Okay, that's fine with me. Oh, we just...
Oh, that's right. I said you were telling us.
Yeah. Okay. Oh.
I'm sorry, keep going.
I'm still on old.
Any more old business?
I got a little more old, sorry.
Sorry.
Tiff, you know, we had that thing today, is the next step for Joy to come and make another kind of, maybe a mini presentation so she can get direction from us? Is that where we are?
I think where they were saying, if we want to continue, we would formalize the process with a formal committee and let them continue looking at options in terms of properties and areas and what the funds would be dedicated to. And whether, I think Rebecca Hall is going to check with, just making sure that those properties meet that criteria, which I do understand are less stringent than the state criteria on a statewide.
Yeah, because they looked at doing it out there at Coles.
And went through, oh no, we never went the whole process.
No, but there wasn't three votes. So what do we do?
Well, we can put that on for the...
Or do we want to just...
If the commission is okay with continuing, we can just say, "No, we're fine with them to continue." And I guess...
Doesn't tie into it or not?
Doesn't tie into anything.
Right?
No.
Well, then I'm fine with them making this more formalized.
Anybody disagree with that? So I don't know if they want us to appoint, make an official appointment or an authorization. There's some of the different ways we could do it. If we did an actual appointment process for a time limit on a board or indefinitely, we have a new committee that we put together. Or if you just do it by an order to list members and if you want, the more we do that, the more complicated it gets. And it sounds simple, but everybody wants to be appointed different things. And if you leave out one group, the other group wants to get represented and by the time it's all said and done, we have an unimaginable, manageable number of people on it. We went through Home Street Task Force, we went through...
Took a while to get that.
It took a while just to even get agreement on who was gonna be appointed to the boards. So we don't do that tonight, but is this something to think about? I guess, and you can let us know. But at this point, we can say that if committee can continue to meet and look at options available. And I guess city attorney and Rebecca Hall will work on what the criteria is for different areas and make sure those areas meet it. Because anything with low to moderate income is gonna be very restrictive. Blinded areas will be restrictive. But if local government's able to do tips in a much less regulated way, then maybe it won't be that hard.
We'll review that. You know, we did look at that carefully with respect to Parkside, but that's a state tip.
Right.
Different animal.
Different animal.
It's my understanding there have only been three Tiff cities in the state of Kentucky. Those are Owensboro, Bowling Green, and Lexington. I was wondering what kind of people were appointed to those particular boards, you know?
That I don't know the answer to, so I guess we can ask staff to get that for us. Because Louisville is a first-class city, they're under a separate statute. Tips in cities, our counties that contain the cities of the first class are under completely different, I think that's in the first part of 65, someplace, I don't know that number.
It's also a state tip.
Okay. So they did a state tip in Louisville, right?
I think the Yum-Sen was a state tip because they...
They didn't go...
Yeah, I knew the Yum-Sen was a state tip, but because that was under Fletcher administration, was Jim Host was involved heavily in that when he was commerce. So I don't know that to be true, that there were only those three cities. It sounds right, but we'll...
Oh, sure, sure. I'm just thinking, probably want, somebody that's urban planning, want other people to develop or something.
Well, I think you will have been sworn in and taken your seat by the time we get to that next step, so... All right, so we'll have that information and we can just get that emailed to us whenever it's available. Is that your refer to new business?
Well, the fellow that is another one would be closed session, the thing down there about the bump outs.
I can give a brief report on that.
Okay. And I think my others can wait.
So that's it. Okay, any new business?
I've got one piece of new business and I'm gonna use a prop. And I think this is pretty easily done. Actually, John Sauer gave me an idea, but somebody else did, so I have to cover up their name.
Terry Sauer.
I really think this would be nice on the back of our name cards if possible.
Oh, yeah.
Just give the highlights of the things, because a lot of times when you're out and about, especially like at Walmart and trying to tell somebody who to call, I only give them the one number, 8500, because that's the only one I can remember. But it would be easier if I could give them, you know, a number that's not. So I just wanted to see if that was possible. And the other thing I mentioned, the last term, it did not happen, but we didn't really push it. When we finished the police academy, we got those little shirts that says City of Frankfurt, man would be T. Hanes, et cetera. I think it's really good when you have people, when you're out and about, you know, to have something, you look official, you know, it has your name on it, you know, we do it for them, just about every, even bullets that I'm on, they have shirts. If I'm on a throwing here bullet, they got a throwing here shirt. You know, you're on the Red Cross, you got a Red Cross, at least a name badge, which is another item, name badge. I just think it looks very professional, especially when we are outside of Frankfurt. Because people look right at it, they identify and they talk to you. So I just wanted to throw that out early on this time.
I'm not trying to be, but he paid me to do this, sort of like this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have our shirts. Do you want name badges too?
Been holding out on me, huh?
I'm supporting you, buddy, it's a tip in. There's the tip in for you. It's just happened to happen. But no, Commissioner, we used to do that for commissioners, I thought you all had them.
We still do. You could go get a mag and just tell them you want the toupee seal on it. But do you want like badges too? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I have my own badge. You know, that I just had somebody, you know, make up. I use it when I go out, because everybody there has a badge on them. And I just feel like, okay, if I want them to know who I am, you know, I need to put a badge on them.
And you don't want to wear the shirt?
Yeah, and I don't want them to just say, "You know, the black guy from Frankfurt." Just a thought.
We've done that before. I thought you all had shirts, I apologize, I didn't know that.
I got one on because I went through the police academy and they gave all graduates the shirt. And I've worn it a couple of times, you know.
Did you say name tag, business card, shirts?
Yeah.
Cool.
Just two years' supply, just in case.
Hey, do you want to buy that silk material?
Yeah, yeah, it's got to be the nice stuff.
I think you can choose your own material, whatever.
I like the silk.
Thank you.
Well, we probably need to actually act on that or just agree to, don't you think, city attorney?
I'm sorry, I was looking at...
It's okay, just don't we need to maybe just say officially, like that's good, like that an official expenditure?
Right. I think we ought to have an official decal with, that's paid for by the city.
We do.
We do.
Okay.
Do we have one for this?
I knew that was gonna matter.
I don't have one.
He didn't miss much.
He gets one, I get one.
She doesn't eat.
I don't eat it either.
Planning this there's in CLS, we order a catalog and pick your shirt and put the seal on it.
That's what Commissioner Bows is just whispering in my ear. Thanks, you must hurry up back there.
Before we get all our, and also do your kids' baseball shirts and stuff.
Well, we can let, just, we'll get that information to the commission, they can either, we can order it from staff or you can just order your own.
If you go out there, you get to look at the catalogs and pick your material?
Yeah, some of the shirts don't fit the same as others.
Right.
If you care about that. Some of them are really big, I mean, same size and everything.
I need some more black shirts.
But Commissioner Haines, do you think we should adopt an official color?
No, I think I'm done.
It used to be, seriously, the thing was the white shirts, but you can get whatever, but that was actually designated.
White is the color?
But you don't have to, you can pick whatever you want.
Are we doing new business?
I think so.
I make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to whatever letters the mayor's getting ready to say.
Is it for...
Is that okay with you? Since I really don't get...
Commissioner, just, Mayor, I thought you might want to point out in 7.4 about the agreement with Kentucky State University and softball team. You know, if you're, you might want to...
That's a ongoing thing, but...
Yeah, their collegiate team, this is probably the fourth agreement we've had with long gone for 20 years. And they play at Captain View, but the last 10 years, they've played at Lakeview, we've lived through all that, so we have a...
That's good.
Always had a working relationship with them for years.
The five-year agreement, so it's one year, four...
Commissioner Ochs had a motion to go into closed session for 61-810.
I'll second that. Oh, I was drawing my second.
Are you doing it for personnel or property?
You do it.
I mean, not personnel. Litigation one.
I think all three of them, one C, I think all three of them are litigation.
Okay, 61-810, sub one, sub C. Motion by Commissioner Ochs, two seconds. Commissioner Hale, always play the C of the state, I.